Welcome to the 2023 School Committee Candidate Forum. I'm Rebecca Townsend, the moderator. Long Meadows election is Tuesday, June 13th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And on Monday, June 12th, at 12:00 noon, it's the deadline to apply in person for an absentee ballot. Long Meadow voters will determine who will fill the three seats for school committee. Each seat has a three-year term. There are four candidates seeking election. Nicole Schwanier, candidate for reelection, Michaela Fitzgerald, Kensee Jaleh. All three are on the ballot. Adam Rosenbloom is campaigning as a write-in candidate. I want to thank LCTV for the opportunity to host a forum on the candidates. Basically, to allow the candidates a public chance to share their views together. The format and ground rules are modeled after those established by established nonpartisan civic associations. And all participants have agreed to the format and ground rules. Candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement and a closing statement. In between, I'll ask questions. Candidates have not seen the questions in advance. And each will have an answer, a chance to answer the question briefly, and we'll rotate who goes first. I may ask follow-ups, and there will be time for some interaction and discussion on that topic. Each candidate will have a chance to ask one question of another candidate prior to closing statements. So with that, we'll begin. I turn to Nicole for the opening statement.
All right. Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you to LCTV for hosting this event. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to the viewers. 10 years ago, I moved to Long Meadow with my family, my husband and our three children. We were drawn to the excellent public schools, the sense of community that we found here, the open spaces, and the library, which we had already been regular users of and loved. After I arrived in town while my children were smaller, I volunteered as a PTO member at Center School, working in the library, and wound up arranging library volunteers for students' classes. A few years ago, I joined the Board of Directors for LEAF, the Long Meadow Educational Excellence for Foundation, and was lucky to work with them to raise funds and also to review and approve grant applications for exciting teacher-directed educational opportunities for our children. I am a high school teacher by trade in the West Springfield School District, and I spend my days with teenagers. And one of the things that we focus on pretty heavily is the idea of civic engagement. And that is not just an academic value to me. It is one that I find to be very important in my own life as well. I think that a successful and supportive educational system relies on the knowledge and cooperation of a lot of people. And I have seen that firsthand in my three years on the school committee. Our administrators and teachers and school staff and families work hand in hand to keep our students' academic and emotional growth at the heart of their learning. And it's been my privilege as a school committee member to both represent the community and support that essential work. I am seeking reelection because we are in the middle of some exciting and important projects, and I look forward to seeing them through.
Thank you. Kensee?
Thank you, LCTV, for hosting this event. Thank you, Ms. Townsend, for moderating, and thank you, candidates, for coming to speak to the voters. My name is Kensee Jaleh. I am a licensed mental health counselor, a national certified counselor, and an adjunct professor of psychology at Pace University. I have over 10 years of clinical mental health counseling experience treating kids, teens, adults, and families who are suffering from moderate to severe mental illness. Now, I'm running for school committee because I believe that our kids are capable of overcoming the worst thing that life is going to throw at them. I believe that they are resilient in the face of destructive societal pressures, and I really want to ensure that I can leverage my clinical expertise, my skills, my backgrounds to ensure that we take a hard look at the crisis that we're facing. We're in a mental health crisis right now. You know, we have 30% of students experiencing depression. We've had 13% who have considered suicide. And I think right now, you know, in the face of all these pressures in society, our students need to have a targeted approach to ensure that they are able to support not only their educational learning, but also their overall development as young adults. I have three kids in the school. I'm a full-time single father, and I was PTO president two years when my kids went to Potager Elementary School in Springfield. You know, I have two kids in Wolf Swamp, one is in Glenbrook. I want to make sure that the schools that they're going into, as they work through this system, there is support that's built in for them, that they're able to thrive, and the educators are equipped with the skills necessary to recognize signs of distress and able to jump in and help students or direct them to where the help is. My best hope is that I would join this already well-functioning committee and leverage my skills to ensure that we make mental health a priority as our students begin to progress through this difficult time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam?
All right. Hello. My name is Adam Rosenbloom. I am running as a write-in candidate, joining this wonderful field of candidates trying to help out on the Long Meadow School Committee. Currently, a physician at Bay State, pardon me, Bay State Medical Center in Springfield, Massachusetts. I am an assistant professor of medicine with the University of Massachusetts Chan School of Medicine. Prior to attending medical school, I was a classroom teacher, teaching biology and chemistry down in Florida in high school. I've taught anatomy and physiology to nursing students at the university level. Currently, I teach graduate medical education. I've been a committee member on finance committees at universities, graduate medical education committees, both in undergraduate and at medical school, and into my residency training. This is a great opportunity to join this committee, and I'm excited to do so. I came to Long Meadow during the pandemic, moved up to help out and see what we could do with this wonderful community. And, you know, most of my family's up here in eastern Massachusetts, but we're a lot closer than where I went to school down in Florida, so just excited to be here. My goals for joining the commu-- pardon me, joining the committee are to put students first, make sure we're doing everything we can to support them, to give teachers all the support they need in these very trying times, and to make sure that we keep our schools safe. So I want to thank you for the opportunity, LCTV, and yeah, just happy to be here.
Thank you. Michaela?
Hi, I'm Michaela Fitzgerald, and I've been a teacher in Massachusetts for the last 14 years. I've lived in Long Meadow with my husband Brennan and our two children, Declan and Maeve, for the past seven years. And over the course of these years, we've watched my children grow, they've made their first friends, and they've reached exciting milestones, and they've just both started in the schools. But it's over the course of befriending all the caretakers and parents in Long Meadow that puts me here today, wanting to run for the school committee. Since graduating college, I have never left the classroom professionally, and I've had the opportunity to hold many different roles within the classroom setting. I firmly believe that my background in special education, teaching English as a second language, and meeting the diverse needs of a large group of urban students will be a benefit to the school committee. What's most important to me is that public education is for everyone, and every single student deserves access to an outstanding education. During my years as a teacher, I've seen staff changes, curriculum changes, and societal changes. I know firsthand how strongly impact the decisions that the administrators and school leaders have on the classrooms and the students. Well-intentioned and carefully considered decisions can flop when they finally reach the classroom. The classroom is the heart of education, and it should always be the safe home of our children and a hub for learning. I want a seat at the table so that I can utilize my classroom experience to make sure the needs of all students are being considered and that our district stays this wonderful place where the best teachers want to come and stay to establish careers.
Thank you. And thank you all. Really appreciate you stepping up to be candidates. I'll run through a series of questions. We'll start in this order. Nicole, you'll go first, and Ken, Adam, Michaela, you'll go next, and then we'll have some discussion. We'll have discussion lasting about five minutes after all of the candidates have spoken. So the first question. Fiduciary responsibility with a duty of loyalty and care to the district is a responsibility of Massachusetts school committees. In 2022, the town voted to approve $1,600,000 for a feasibility study for Glenbrook Middle School, which may include the potential consolidation with Williams Middle School. Please state your position on this project and what your goals are, noting both the financial and educational implications of the outcomes that you seek. And if you are in favor of a new school, where should that school be located and why?
All right. I will kick us off, I guess. So I have spent a lot of time on this over the last few years. It's been kind of a key feature of school committee. So I'll start with the first half of your question, with fiscal planning. One of the top priorities and top responsibilities of any school committee is to approve, is to put together and approve a budget. And we recently received support for our FY '24 budget, including some increases that had not previously been part of the budget. Particularly, each year over the last few years, we've looked to increase spending for things like multi-tiered systems of support, further intervention options for students, new positions for support during the pandemic. So looking at that budget is a constant, ongoing work of the school committee. We have been lucky enough to finance a few new positions over the years, some extra professional development for teachers, and we were recently, in the last year, able to get three-year contracts for all units signed and negotiated with the help of Long Meadow Educational Excellence. So the middle school, I worked this past year, I've been the chair of the school committee and have worked with our committee members, the superintendent and town officials, to form the middle school building committee. And we sought funding for and was approved for the feasibility study. Sorry, apologies. Moving forward, I think what's really important to remember about the feasibility study is that it is the first step out of many. And so I think my goal, for lack of a better word, when it comes to that, is to remain as true as possible to that process, to allow that process to unfold how it unfolds. So I don't have a particular stance on if we should have one versus two schools or where that school should be yet, because I think it's important to see that process through with integrity and see what things come out of that feasibility study. What do we see about planning in our town? What do we see about access to municipal supports and census data? And all of those things will come together to create a picture that I think will give us the information we need to make some educated choices as a community.
Okay, so for the location, you don't have a preference?
I don't have a preference. I know that in talking to other town officials, there's been mention that it's good to have redundancies when it comes to important buildings such as schools. So having the ability to have not just one road that carries things like plumbing and internet accessibility and electricity and all those things, so that if there is a problem with gas lines, et cetera, if there is a problem where that access is cut off on one road, there's potentially another way in. So I know that's a consideration as well with the feasibility study. That will be something that's looked at, is does this location have multiple ways for municipal access? And so that would be a consideration as well. And there are a few sites in town that I think open up that as a possibility.
Okay. Ken?
My opinion to the question, there are a few parts to that question.
Sure, sure, sure. So state your position on the project, so that 1.6 million for a feasibility study for Glenbrook Middle School, which may include the potential consolidation of Williams. So what are your goals are for this project, the financial and educational implications for such a project of the outcomes you seek? And if you're in favor of a consolidated new school, where should it be and why?
All right. So I attended the town meeting where they discussed, you know, the step to have a feasibility study, and there were many people who had different opinions around that. I can understand the frustration that some neighbors had surrounding this, the timeline, and the money was paying upfront before we even put a shovel in the ground. But I think we are constrained by just the process and the way we're getting that funding from the state. So I think I'm in favor of just following this process to ensure that we're using less Long Meadow taxpayer money and getting more money from the state in order to make these projects a reality. I would like to, you know, when my daughter went to Glenbrook, she says, you know, classrooms are really strange here. There are no doors or no walls in the classrooms. And that was concerning to her because, you know, she can be distracted easily by what's going on in the hallway, and I've heard that from parents as well. So I'm in favor of having a consolidated school. I'm not, I do want to figure out, you know, where is the best location, some of the points that Nicole pointed out. After the feasibility study would tell us what makes the most sense for the town, for the building, and for the utilities. However, I think having one consolidated school would go a long way to make, to ease the transition, because even going from one elementary school to one of the middle schools, you're meeting new faces, and that can be kind of very jarring to that learning process. I think having the elementary schools, you know, filter into one middle school, you're building those connections at that age in sixth grade, and you carry that on into high school. And I think that makes the most sense in terms of supporting our kids and the way they learn, and just recognizing how difficult it can be to transition with new faces in classes.
Thank you. Adam?
I do just want to disclose at the outreach here that my wife is on the building committee. So this is an issue that I've heard a lot about as well. I also was at that very exciting town meeting. It was some very heated discussion there about this feasibility study. I will say I'm in support of the feasibility study and looking at all the options that are before us to make sure that we're getting the best educational facilities in Long Meadow. I understand, you know, as we were saying, that there are counterarguments as far as putting that money upfront, but it opens more doors, you know, and I think that's what we're looking for, is to have a potential option, set of options, before us. I, you know, as far as my position on whether we were to have an integrated middle school or not, I, you know, firmly agree with what's been said previously. It's far too early to, you know, weigh in on that. I think that we want to make sure that we're making a responsible decision here for the community, and as such, you know, we just, we don't have all the variables yet. So as more information comes out, I, you know, would look forward to putting the puzzle pieces together and helping to, you know, put out the proposal to Long Meadow so that we can, again, bring in the best educational facilities we have. I think it's very important that we recognize, you know, the fact that since we have had two middle schools, you know, there are different cultural identities that we have to respect as there's pride in both those institutions. So moving forward, you know, in addition to the logistics and municipal issues, just something else to look at.
Thank you. Michaela?
So I'll start off by saying that as an educator, I am a data-driven person, and so I feel like I have to start by saying that, and there's not much to say about it because of the process of where the feasibility study is. I think it's wonderful that the town is doing the feasibility study and that so many people are collaborating. And my goal for the middle school project is that we, our end result, is something incredible that is a hub of learning for the kids, that is state-of-the-art, that is safe, and that the kids, the students want to be in and that the teachers want to be in.
Okay. Thank you. If you'd like to have some time to discuss, you may among yourselves, and I will step in only very briefly if I need to.
All right. I'll add on just to say that as, as school committee members, we are often asked to serve on other committees in addition to our school committee membership. So the two that I serve on in town in addition to school committee are the middle school building committee and also the long-range planning steering committee. And so I do feel like that process is a really important thing to keep an open mind to. And that's been something that I'm reminding myself as we move through this, this middle school building thing, is as a committee member, I want to remain open to what we find out during that feasibility study. I like how you mentioned that there are variables that we still don't know yet. And so while I think we've seen a big swell of support at town meetings for the idea of the possibility of one middle school, and if we, as a town, continue to move down that path in a way that we are, you know, unified for, then that totally makes sense. And I would support that absolutely. But I want to stay true to that process as much as possible and see what comes out of the feasibility study and what comes out of future meetings with town members and hear voices from the community overall.
I just want to say, you know, it's going to be important as we get more information from the feasibility study that we, we are ensuring that our neighbors are getting that information. Beyond the town meeting, you know, there's not, it's very easy for neighbors to kind of be busy with their lives and their work and their families and to not understand the process. I think that's where a lot of the frustration came in that meeting, that they just didn't understand the process that we needed to go through before we can get things moving in a way that's visible. So as we get information back from the feasible study, it's going to be important to communicate with our neighbors and let them know where, what it said, you know, where our options are from that point, and then how we may move forward.
That's a great point.
I would like to take this opportunity, again, just going back to that town meeting, to say thank you to the members of the committee, because I think, you know, as you're saying, I didn't know a lot about it going in, and I thought they presented the information very well. And being another data-driven person, I think that they really made a very good case. And, you know, should I be allowed the opportunity, I'd love to continue that communication so we can spread the word and get everybody on the same page.
Is there anything that you heard in the discussion that you disagree with? Or are you, you did have some differences in terms of one, one came out specifically in preference for a consolidated school, the others wanted more wait-and-see approach. What would be some financial implications that might be persuasive to you one way or another? So what are the variables that might affect your opinion about how things should work And anyone can answer this, you don't have to go in order.
I think, you know, in terms of finances, I think, you know, I guess this would be a point to consider if you look at, if we were to do a consolidated school. I think, you know, we should look at our current staffing and how difficult it can be just to keep some of these positions filled. Their positions have been empty, have been empty and open for some time now, and I'm wondering, you know, if we had a consolidated school, if that would kind of take some of the pressure off of the roles that are just really difficult to fill. I think that's one point to consider, not the only point, but I think that's something we should look at as we look downrange about what it may cost.
Okay.
I think also, when we're moving through that feasibility study, part of that process, we'll be looking at what the financial costs are for having one versus two middle schools. So we know that both of our middle schools are in need of significant updates and upgrades, one more significantly than the other, but that does not take away from the needs that that Williams has as well. So while we're in the process right now under Glenbrook Middle School, that does not exclude us from involving Williams Middle School if the community chooses to go in that direction. And if we did choose to go in another direction, we might find that we have updates that need to continue happening at Williams Middle Schools. So there are definitely financial aspects that will weigh heavily. They're not the only variables that weigh heavily, but that will be something for the community to really take into consideration as we move through this process and weigh what are our possible options and what are the pros and cons of each.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to question two, and Kensee, we'll start with you, and then down the road. Nicole, we get a break.
Not go first, though?
Yeah. All right. So the school committee deals with other town officials in a variety of ways. Transportation to and from school is an issue that affects parents, children, the broader community as well. We often hear car line complaints. If you've ever been stuck behind the car line and not trying to be part of it either, you have a concern about this. What kinds of transportation policies would you like to consider, whether to mitigate or perhaps you are fine with the way things are, the current car-focused transportation system?
I'm very familiar with the car line. I'm in there every morning, and then once I drop off my kids at Wolf Swamp, I get stuck behind the central car line on my way to work. So, right, so transportation has been difficult this year, you know, for me in particular, being a single dad, you know. My daughter was able to get on the bus, my kids were not able to get on the bus because they'd missed the cutoff point to sign up. I think it's going to take a lot more, I guess, creative thinking in terms of how the car line is arranged. Maybe it's different drop-off times for different grades, but it's not, may not be possible when it comes to multiple kids in one family. I think there could be consideration to increasing busing, but again, even with that, it comes down to how many people sign up for it and the cost of that. We're already increasing it for next year. There's no simple solution, but I think that, I think it's great that we're bringing this up right now. It should be an ongoing conversation and figure out what kind of creative ideas we can have to ensure that kids get into school on time and parents have the least stress as possible in the morning, so kids can start school ready to learn.
Okay. So are you more in favor of the way the system is with modification, or do you want to see changes?
Well, I think any change that takes place, I think it has to come from a lot, a lot of inputs from the parents and the schools first. It's functioning, but not, not great, because it is really long, and sometimes people are late just because of the car line, not because they got there late. So I think right now, there's no immediate change that would have to take place. We have to first maybe survey, talk to the teachers, talk to the parents, and get some creative ideas. So there should be some change over time.
Thank you. Adam?
I would be in favor of modifications to the current system. I think that, you know, like most issues, this comes down to communication and, you know, making sure that we have an open door to talk about these issues on the school committee, I think would be very important moving forward. You know, this is something that will likely always be an issue, and it's something that would be important that we continue to address it as possible. But, you know, without seeing any information, I can't really weigh in one way or another on any specific changes I would make to the car line. But I can definitely say that I'd be open to hearing people's concerns and trying to address them.
Okay.
So I also have experience with the car line my first year, and I don't use it often. I tend to walk with my kids because it's actually a lot easier. And again, I, I think the reason why I'm running for the school committee really is that I'm a parent and a teacher, and I love to engage in conversations, and I know where I am. I don't hear too much complaints about the car line at Blueberry Hill, I think is run really well. But I, I want to take this role on the school committee one as where I take the data and interpret it and then make decisions. So I don't know how much I would have to modify other car lines because I haven't really had much experience with them. But I do know that there's also a lot of creative and innovative ways that we can deal with it. Like, I know at Blueberry Hill and all the schools, we do a bike, walk, stroll, and I think doing that more and getting families involved and walking the kids to school is great for our community and for the car line.
Thank you. Nicole?
So when my children were younger, we lived just under a mile from Center School, and Williams Middle School was even closer, and those were our schools. So I don't have as much experience with the car lines, just because, I would say, about 90% of the time, my kids rode their bikes or walked to school. And that was actually one of the things that really drew us to the community, was knowing that our children could walk and bike to school. I feel like that's an excellent way to start your day, that outside fresh air, some movement is a really great way to enter into the school day, having gotten a little bit of exercise and collaboration or opportunity to spend time with friends and get a little bit of movement in. And so we were lucky that we were close enough to be able to make that happen. And I think as much as possible for families that that is a possibility for, I really want to continue encouraging that. It's a great option for a lot of the members of our community, and I love Michaela's point about how we, we do have these walk, bike, ride days, and adding more of them is a great way to get more students out and walking. There are a lot of people who can't bike or walk to school, and that's just not really an option. And so as much as possible, considering things like carpooling, and then we've been lucky in LPVAC, so our busing comes through the Lower Pioneer Valley Educated Education Collaborative, and having the option to receive grant money to get new electric buses. And that's going to keep, hopefully, there's, it's the beginning stages of what I hope will continue to grow and make it so that we can maybe have more buses in town without a huge cost increase.
So what are the variables here with transportation? I mean, it's, it affects parents, it affects children, but it also affects the rest of town and neighboring communities. So a transportation system doesn't affect just one person or a kind of person. How would you work with other town officials to address this? And you, and again, this is not in order necessarily, anybody can answer it if they want to and have a discussion.
So just from other communities that I've been a part of, you know, through my, my schooling, I've, you know, moved around to a bunch of places, and I've seen a fantastic collaboration with other members of other services, for example, the police department, you know, being involved, you know, in conjunction with, we've got a fantastic network of crossing cars here, you know, just to make sure that if there are any problem areas, any problem intersections, for example, maybe we can handle them on a case-by-case basis to make sure that we're finding the best solution. Doesn't mean that there has to necessarily be one solution for the entire neighborhood, but, you know, we might be able to break it down and find better options just looking at it individually, you know, one street at a time.
I think, too, something that this town has done really well so far is surveying everyone in the town and the community so that if this was an issue, the transportation and car line, like reaching out outside of parents to the whole community in terms of like a survey. And, you know, you get what you give. So if you fill out the survey and you, you know, put that time, and then we know what the concerns are with the transportation of people outside of the schools and the parents.
Okay.
I think our, our busing rules right now can be frustrating for some families that live a little bit on the outer edges of, and myself included. So we moved a few years ago towards-- So we moved a few years ago towards down route five, a little bit farther. And if we lived there when our kids were younger, they really wouldn't have been able to bike and walk to school. It would have been a little bit too far for them to actually get to where they were going. So having that option right now of under two miles for K through eight and then folks having to buy into the busing and not really having as much of an option for the high school without families having to buy in, I think is a real concern for a lot of families. And so I'm hopeful that as we keep moving forward with some conversations and continued grant funding and discussions with LPVAC and hopefully with the town as we move into the next fiscal year, we might be able to in the future, look at being able to expand offerings for busing so that maybe there are fewer cars out at the same time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or discussion? We'll move on. Adam, this one we'll start with you.
Okay.
Among the vision statements in the 399-page policy manual is that LPS will be recognized by the Long Meadow community for its outstanding fiscal management. Another, our alumni will report a high degree of satisfaction with the preparation for life that they received through their years in our schools. Got three questions related to these seemingly disparate.
Okay.
I'll leave it to you to draw connections. How well would you say the school district has worked toward both of these statements? Fiscal, outstanding fiscal management and alumni have a high degree of pride. How well would you say the school district has worked toward these statements? How could you determine this and where could we improve? Where could the district improve?
Okay, so breaking this down, you know, when we moved here in 2020, we were looking, you know, we started renting, we were lucky enough to rent a home in Long Meadow and we were looking at the different communities and asking a lot of my coworkers, a lot of my wife's social networks that she was creating between people she was involved with, different workout groups or through our children's daycare. And so we were surveying, you know, for really the whole Pioneer Valley, you know, where the best place to live was. And of course, Long Meadow came up number one. And from the large number of people, especially that I work with at the hospital, you know, these kind of questions came up because, you know, we could see the property taxes that we had here and we wanted to see what the return on investment of that was. And, you know, from the wide body of people that we talked to, everybody was, was very happy with the financial management of Long Meadow, that they felt that the money that they were paying was going to the schools. And that was, you know, the main driving reason for a lot of people to live in Long Meadow.
So it was through that interaction?
Yeah, through that survey and the questions and, and, you know, it was pretty unanimous.
Is there a place where the district can improve?
Well, possibly with the traffic lines for the schools by the sound of it. I didn't hear an area specifically with, you know, financial considerations that it could improve. I know that, you know, the, the same thing, you know, going to that second point, the same thing was said repeatedly. Every child who graduated from Long Meadow had a choice where they were going and they were able to attend the college of their first choice because of the academic excellence of Long Meadow. And so as a member of the school committee or possibly as a member of the school committee, that is, would be one of my goals as we try to put students first, to allow them to achieve their goals and help us shape the future of our society.
Thank you. Michaela?
All right, I think I might need you to repeat the question one more time.
Of course, yeah, sure. So part of the vision statement in the policy manual is that LPS will be recognized by the Long Meadow School Committee for its outstanding fiscal management. Another, our alumni will report a high degree of satisfaction with the preparation for life that they received through their years in our schools. How well would you say the school district has worked toward these statements? How do you determine this and where can the district improve?
Okay, great. I'm going to start with how well they're doing on that second part because I think they're doing a very great job. I know so many people that actually graduated from Long Meadow and moved back here because of the schools. It's, I, I honestly think a study could be done. There's more people that live in this town that went to these schools and came back to put their children in these schools. It blows my mind. I'm super, I, I feel as proud of it as they are because I'm also a proud Massachusetts public school graduate. I didn't graduate from Long Meadow, but I went to similar, a similar school and I'm super proud of my education. It made a huge difference in my life and I see all these people who graduated from Long Meadow feel the same way or they wouldn't be back here paying the taxes and living in Long Meadow. So that is how I determined that part. And also I think they're still working on, on that with the vision of the graduate, which is one of the mission statements of the district. And I think that it's something that is important to me because it's one, a best practice as an educator, that you're building those competencies to go out in the world and that we're starting at a young age to build, build those up and those are what create a well-rounded education. I didn't get to the fiscal part yet.
Real quick.
Okay. I, I do think that there are some ways that we could improve, like getting grants from the state. I think you have to be, I think as somebody who is an educator and has worked in districts where money isn't as readily available, I've learned how to find it when I need it through state grants. And also I think just doing things like at all three of the elementary schools, they have different social emotional learning curriculums. Well, just knowing that those all cost money, well, why don't we streamline them? I, I think there's definitely ways we could probably improve fiscally and I look forward to helping with that. But I also think that it, the bottom line is that second part is more important, that this, the education is just excellent and that we can continue to give the kids an excellent education.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. I would agree with Michaela that there's, there's always ways for us to find ways to improve the budget. I think our budget tends to be reflective of a lot of other towns, that the majority of the budget heads towards the school department is not unusual at all. And I'm proud that we work really hard to make sure that we're staying focused on being fiscally responsible while also meeting the needs of our students. So to move to the second part, I will say that I also often find people who have or know people who have moved back to town after having grown up here to raise their own children here. And that is to me reflective of the satisfaction that a lot of alumni have when they leave the schools. And I hope that that's continuing to improve with each year that we go. We, a few years ago began at the high school, an internship program that gives us the opportunity to send students out into the world. And those opportunities and the new programs that we put together are ways to increase that satisfaction with students as they graduate.
Thank you. Ken?
So this year I was following the, the budgetary process and I was very, very happy to see that there's increased focus on the, you know, the social emotional aspect and creating positions that would support our kids besides just in the classroom, but just as they are developing as young adults and young children. So I think fiscally, I think the way I look at the fiscal management is what kind of results are we getting? And it's clear that the kind of young adults that we are, that we are graduating from the high school is indicative of money well spent. The amount of programs that are available from the elementary school to within to the middle school, the music program, the sports, the languages in high school, it is amazing to me. And that is the reason why I moved here with my three children is that I know that my tax dollars would be well spent because they're going to come out of that with options and knowing and being ready to, to face the world, whatever it looks like.
Thank you. Discussion, if you want to say anything that you didn't get a chance to finish in that quick one minute?
I want to echo that. I agree with Michaela about the social emotional programs. I think there should be a unified language amongst all the schools that have one program. So that way, no matter what school they begin at, as they transition to new schools, the teachers, educators, students are all still speaking the same language, it's the same social emotional program. I think that continuity is going to make it very easy for them to know how to reach out for help, how to recognize signs of distress and that way they feel supported from elementary school all the way to high school.
I would say that I agree with that as well. I, I know that that's also a goal that has been the district's goal. It was a goal that started just before the pandemic and then kind of had a pin put in it as we entered into the pandemic and has been reopened up over the last few years. So one of the things curriculum subcommittee does is look at new curriculums and, and part of that process is beginning to have the elementary schools look at unified programs. And so with a new director of student and family services, the hope is that there can be some conversations among the teachers, among the staff to find out what the pros and cons are for different programs and what they might like. Our family, we, my kids attended center school, so the thing that I loved about the social emotional curriculum there was we had peace builders and it became a community like common parlance. I could look out at a group of kids in my yard and be like, are you being a peace builder right now? How could you, how could you ask, what would a peace builder do in this situation? How could you ask for help? What would be a, being a wise friend, et cetera? Like I loved that that language was there for all of those kids. And I think that's a really important thing to strive for as a district, for us to broaden that out. And each of the schools has their own and it is that common parlance. But finding a way to bring all of them together under a unified social emotional curriculum is, is definitely a key goal for the school committee and the town or the Long Meadow Public Schools moving forward.
As a father of two future Lancers, I'm just excited to see what we can, can offer them and how I can possibly be part of that on the school committee.
All right. We'll move to the next question then. Michaela, starting with you?
First.
Yep. All right, so it's the policy of the Long Meadow School Committee to provide textbooks that enrich a curriculum in support of the district's goals for instruction and learning and that reflects the district's goals for diversity, equity, inclusion and social emotional development, which we spent a lot of time on before. How would you implement this policy? What does an equitable and inclusive approach to education mean to you?
It means a sure lot to me. As I said before, my background is special education and teaching English as a second language and just that the idea that every student should have the best public school education, no matter what challenges or barriers they have or what they need. And something that's really important to me is a universal design for learning. And that is also another goal of the district's right now. And I know I'm on the school council at Blueberry Hill and we're always talking about it there. And I think it's another best practice that the district's doing along with a vision of a graduate that encompasses a equitable and inclusive education for everyone. And I, I have had significant experience implementing a universal design for learning. So I really look forward to being on the school committee and being able to use my experience and my understanding of it to help make the best decisions for an equitable and inclusive education when it comes to materials and curriculum.
How would you say, for example, with the textbooks? How would you implement that as a school committee member?
Can you, I don't understand quite.
So if a policy is to provide textbooks that enrich a curriculum in support of these goals, what does that look like? As a school committee member, what are you doing to implement this policy?
All right, well, it, it looks like making sure that the teachers are having the best professional development so that they can understand things like universal design for learning, so that they can choose the best textbooks in their classrooms that meet the curriculum needs, but also is equitable and inclusive of the children that are in front of them in the classroom.
Thank you. Nicole, for you.
So I think one way that we make that a priority or make that possible, I forget the exact wording of the question.
Implementing the, implementing the policy on, on textbooks, how does that work? How would you be part of that?
How would I?
And then what does the equitable and inclusive approach to education mean to you?
Okay, so I think the first part, what that looks like is making sure that we as a school committee are supporting the district's goals of equitable and inclusive education for all, supporting the work that they are continuing to do with universal design for learning. And I mean that in the literal sense of making it a priority in the budget because that is by far the thing that we are able to most impact. Working on the curriculum subcommittee, I've been lucky to learn a lot about the process of textbook adoption and to see that that really begins with the teachers in the school. The teachers in the school come together and have meetings and regular time together to discuss what they see those student needs are. It's a process that is data-driven from start to finish. What are they seeing as the needs of Long Meadow Public Schools? What do they see as possible curriculums that could fill those needs? And through that entire curriculum review process, they continue to meet with the curriculum subcommittee and update on what they're learning and where they are and what happens. And so it's important for us to just be available to support that process from start to finish.
Thank you. Ken?
So in my, in my clinical work, I'm very lucky that I'm able to interact with so many different people, different backgrounds, different experiences, different cultures, as well as even as an actual professor of psychology, again, different backgrounds, different experiences. So every semester I have to, I'm charged with adopting a textbook for the, for my classes. I teach various psychology courses and I have to make sure that I don't just say, yeah, well, we used last semester or last year, I'll just keep doing that. I have to make sure that the textbook that we are using in our courses are reflective of today and the values of today and there are, and that they are using inclusive language, especially in the mental health field. We're constantly realizing that, you know, dated information, dated textbooks are not inclusive and it kind of makes people, makes it harder to engage. So I think, you know, as we look at the textbooks that we are using in our schools, I think we should constantly review them and make sure that we can bring in experts to kind of give suggestions as to what would be the appropriate textbooks that would make everyone feel included. And I think that's the second part of the question.
That's fine. We'll have a discussion. Adam?
Yeah, I would echo a lot of what Nicole said. I think that the teachers on the ground are able to see what textbooks are working, what material they need so that they can compare curricula and, and see what works best for the district. You know, when I was in high school, I remember in our APES history class, we ended up changing the textbook that we were using because it glossed over the internment camps of the Japanese during World War II. And you can find that sometimes the textbooks that you're using may have an implicit bias. And so once you identify that, you know, and the best people to do that are the teachers because they see it day in and day out. Making sure that that communication is open and making sure that, you know, you provide the resources that they need, that's how you're going to make the changes that make Long Meadow schools better than they even are right now.
Okay. Thank you. So in terms of what I'm hearing, bringing in whether it's teachers or professional development for teachers, experts, is there anybody else you should bring in or who are the experts?
I think we should consider, you know, parents should be keyed into that process as well. You know, though, you know, our educators are on the, on the front lines of presenting that information and they're going to be the first ones to kind of recognize something that doesn't quite fit the values and that may need to be changed. By the way, whenever possible, we should lower the bar and make it easier for parents to get involved in the children's education.
I would.
Discuss.
Oh.
This is open discussion time, about five minutes.
I was going to say, I just, I firmly believe that, you know, parents are definitely a very big part of education, given the, the social climate that we're in right now. I, I think that we've experienced kind of a swing on, on the other end of the pendulum, on the other end of the spectrum. You know, we have different language being put out there and I think it's important that we, we keep that straight because you have ideas like parent rights, which is really a misnomer for parent control. Just this week, the Southern Poverty Law Center, you know, was identifying groups that, you know, are under this umbrella of, of parent rights to steer the curricula of different districts. And what we want to make sure moving forward is that we're supporting our teachers because they are the experts and they know they have the training and the certification. And while education does not stop, you know, when someone goes home, we have to make sure that, that there's a balance there because otherwise you can get a very small group of people dictating for an entire district what's going on.
I would agree with that a lot. And I think there are a lot of really good ways for parents and families to be involved in the process already, starting with how families are able to be updated. When we meet as a curriculum subcommittee, that meeting is then shared when we have a full meeting. And so tuning into school committee meetings and having an opportunity to hear what's happening. Most recently, the middle schools began looking at middle school math new curriculums. And I want to be clear that we don't just mean textbooks. There's, there's a lot of components, as you all know, that go into curriculum. And then paused because they decided they wanted to wait for some new reports to come out before they make a final determination about what their recommendation is. And the curriculum subcommittee is able to report that that's what's actually happening now. And that gives parents an eye into what's happening. When there is a new curriculum that's chosen, there's a time period where families are encouraged to preview the materials, to discuss, share any concerns, et cetera. And then we've had over the years also opportunities for parents to come into the school, particularly surrounding math, when it sort of changed from the way we all learned math, so that you can come into school and find out, how are your children learning math now? How can we make sure that you understand the curriculum so you can support your children at home? Well, those are good ways to get families involved too.
All right. Thank you. Nicole, we're back to you.
Okay.
Voters trust those who enter elected and appointed government offices to adhere to standards and laws for ethical behavior. Open meeting law, state ethics law, professional ethics, campaign finance laws, a lot of laws. Open meeting law, state ethics law, professional ethics, campaign finance laws, a lot of laws, play a role in ensuring that elected and appointed officials are adhering to a set of standards for civic life. Have you had any issues in your personal or professional lives relating to these? How would you avoid ethical problems or deal with personal preference or biases in decision-making? And this can relate to any relatives in the school department, kids in school, you name it. An ethics question.
Okay. So I haven't had any issues with that, but I've definitely had a lot of experience considering it. I'm a public school teacher in another district. Being a public state employee and being an elected official means, first off, that in both of those positions, there's an awful lot of ethics training that happens. You go through yearly, constant updating on ethics training. You sign off on them every single year. And just making sure that I am considering which hat I'm wearing at which point in my day is a really important thing that I try to consider as I move through my day. At some points in the day, I'm parent. At some points, I'm school committee or school committee chair. At other points, I'm teacher. And it's important for me to be clear about which of me is speaking in that moment and what my position is informed by. So I think that's probably the biggest thing to recall.
Thank you. Ken?
So obviously, I'm not on the school committee as of right now. In my role as a clinician, I constantly am grappling with different boundaries and different roles that I play between people I know, people that I treat, and their families as well, and other providers. I've done very well with separating those different roles and ensuring that people are getting what they are looking for. If they come to me for treatment, I'm going to make sure that I'm going to treat them as their clinician, rather than a friend, a neighbor, a friend of a friend, someone who referred them to me. On the committee, I would keep that in mind as I work with people I know in town and speak with them, considering that my kids are in the school system as well. I want to make sure that I don't have any type of bias towards one school or one teacher. But that is a daily experience for me, as I work with many different people in different organizations.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Voters who trust all those who enter elected and appointed government offices to adhere to standards and laws for ethical behavior. Open meeting law, state ethics law, professional ethics, campaign finance laws, all play a role in ensuring that elected and appointed officials are adhering to these set of standards for civic life. Have you had any issues in personal or professional lives relating to any of those? How will you avoid ethical problems or deal with personal preference or bias in decision-making? Any relatives in the school department, kids in school? You mentioned that your wife is on the building committee, but anything else? But related to, how do you avoid ethical problems?
Right. Well, I can say I have not had any ethical problems. In my position as a physician, I also have to go through significant annual ethical training. Thankfully, the Board of Registration in Medicine for Massachusetts and the American Medical Association make it pretty easy to stay within the boundaries of that. And there's a lot of overlap between many of the ethical boundaries that you would have as a physician and as a member of such a committee as the school committee. As far as how to best avoid those ethical issues, I don't know. I mean, I grew up watching Mr. Rogers. You'd be nice to people, and you'd answer things honestly, and honesty is the best policy. I think that that kind of, you follow those rules, you'll be in the clear.
Thank you. Mikayla?
I mean, I grew up with Mr. Rogers, too.
Great guy.
And I've got no ethical issues so far. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Correlation, causation?
So, yeah, I, so far, have never had any ethical issues in my life. And I've had the experience of teaching family members, and I've been able to do that without showing any bias. And I think that's just the training I've had as an experienced educator, is that you walk into a room, and in that room, that time, these 20, 29 individuals, like, it doesn't matter who you like most or least, like, you need to educate them. And so that's where my experience of not showing any bias or preference would come in to play.
Yeah. So I'm also thinking of the, you're in Big Y, somebody stops you and says, your name, "I have a big problem with this teacher, and this teacher, and this teacher." What do you do?
Well, so I would say what you do in that moment is remind folks that as a school committee member, it is not our purview to deal with teacher issues. It is not. So my recommendation to any parent who has a concern about a teacher is always the same, which is, you need to talk to the teacher first. And then if that's not enough to satisfy your concern, you need to bring the building principal into that conversation, and they will help you figure out what next steps are. It's not, it's just not our place, as a school committee member, to dive into a concern that a parent has about a particular teacher. If it's a concern about a larger community issue, then yes. I think it's extremely important for us, as a committee, to be very transparent, keep lines of communication open, to be available, and to talk with people openly. But to be clear about what things it is and is not always appropriate to talk about. And a particular staffing concern is just not one.
I agree with what Nicole said. Another reason why I ran for school committee is because I just love engaging in conversations about school, even the tough ones. Like, I've had calls about report cards and teachers, and I love helping people find the right way to solve their problem, because I know that there's a caring educator and a caring administrator on one side, and there's a caring parent on the other. So I've learned over time to field questions the right way. And again, adding, agreeing with what Nicole said, complaining about a teacher isn't a school committee issue, but if I ran into somebody who asked about a teacher, I would probably engage in the conversation and helping them find the right avenue to answer that question and get the help that they need.
I definitely agree with Nicole and Mikayla about that approach. I think it's going to be important, as a parent, when they are complaining, that they at least feel heard, right? So some empathy, I understand you care a whole lot about your children and their education. And then, of course, direct them to the avenue to get that problem solved. But if they really feel like you're hearing them and not just brushing them off, it's going to go a long way for them to feel like, you know what, they actually care, and they're giving me the right information, and I should pursue that.
I don't think you're going to find any dissension on this question. I think we're all pretty much on the same page.
So the other aspect is the open meeting law. That's a hard one to negotiate sometimes if you're on a subcommittee. That subcommittee is still subject to the open meeting law. You can't have the subcommittee in Starbucks. You've got to have everything posted, minutes posted, agendas posted, materials posted, with enough time. That's an area where folks often slip up, because they're not used to having to post meetings, especially if they're friendly with others. What do you do if you slip up with, say, the open meeting law, or campaign finance, or any of the ethics laws, or you have an ethics question? What do you do? Because we're not perfect human beings.
No, yeah. So I think, I mean, we have, so we go through, so school committee members go through training also, and there's an entire course that the Mass Association of School Committees puts together. And part of it is exactly making sure that we understand what the rules are. And subcommittees are tricky, because there's only three people on them, which means two people constitutes a quorum, which means you literally cannot talk about anything related to your subcommittee with one other person who is on your committee, which can sometimes be like, oh, no, wait, I can't ask you that question. I have to go ask somebody else, because I don't want to actually talk about anything related to X, Y, Z with you, because it could be in our subcommittee. I think when we do have a question, there is an ethics lawyer for the state. And so there have been times where I have called, and I know other committee members have called and said, hey, I need to ask the lawyer of the day a question. I just want to make sure that I'm not stepping into a gray area here and be clear and transparent about that as it comes up.
So asking the attorney in advance?
Yes, just to be sure.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to question six, and we'll start with you, Ken. The committee is expected to collaborate with and hold the superintendent accountable at the same time. How would you manage this dual role to achieve best outcomes for students?
I think it's important to maintain a strong and open relationship with the superintendent. Dr. O'Shea has done an amazing job. I had a few interactions with him, but by all accounts, based on his budget report, based on what I've heard from other members in the community, he's done a great job. In my role, I also work as an executive of a mental health nonprofit, and I hire a lot of my staff, hire a lot of directors who work under me. So while I hire them, we also work very closely, and I empower them to lead their own staff. So I have a lot of experience working as a group for people that I've hired. So I see no concern doing that as well while on the school committee.
Thank you.
As an internal medicine physician, my day is filled with talking to surgeons, radiologists, consultants, family members. It's a lot of communication. Making sure that you are keeping those lines open is something that I have a lot of experience with. And I think that, obviously, there are going to be situations that make some of these discussions more challenging, but just having some experience talking about difficult matters, I think I'm well-suited, should that occasion occur on the school committee.
So I have significant amount of experience with the Massachusetts Educator, Effective Educator Framework, which are rubrics that are wonderful. They're a wonderful tool as an educator to use to make sure you're following everything you need to do to be the best educator and what you can work on, as well as coaching other educators. It's nice to have this rubric to use, and also it goes on to include administrators and school leaders. So I feel like having that background would be critical for the school committee when collaborating with a superintendent and also evaluating a superintendent.
Thank you.
I also have a lot of experience with the Massachusetts Educator Framework. It becomes evaluation season in my life midway through the spring, working on my own and also weighing in Superintendent O'Shea's. And so I think that that process is also really open and accessible to the public, the process of evaluation of the superintendent. And Dr. O'Shea has been absolutely excellent to work with. He's extremely communicative and ready to answer questions and ready to address concerns. And one of the things that I've been impressed by over the last few years is how we all sit down and write out our evaluations, and he has to provide evidence for those evaluations. And if I see something that I'm like, do you have another piece of evidence for this? Could you give me a little bit more info on how you've maybe met this goal, or if you're still making progress on it? He is ready to make that happen, and that's been really helpful. And to make, how do I want to say this? To take to heart the things that we write when we say, looking forward, consider doing this, and then see that happen. And that process should include both things that we are like, you've done really well with this, looking forward, consider this, as a thing to add.
Any other items you want to discuss in that topic of superintendent?
I think something that we're all kind of echoing here, but prior committee experience can be very helpful here, because you can apply those past experiences to extrapolate for the future, talking with the superintendent. Speaking truth to power is never an easy thing, but serving on these educational committees, it really provides you a lot of confidence to be able to do so, because you know who you're representing, and that's what really gives you the drive to make sure you're doing the right thing.
Thank you. So for this last question, we're going to have some time where you get to ask each other questions. If you'd like to have a brief back-and-forth discussion, you can do that. We'll start with Nicole. You're going to be asking Mikayla a question.
All right. So just for anyone viewing at home, we picked from a hat who we were asking our questions of. So I chose Mikayla's number, and therefore I am asking Mikayla the question. And my question is, what do you see as one of the critical issues facing Long Meadow Public Schools? And how do you plan to engage the community on this issue? You have a lot of things in the work, or in the works. How do you like to engage the community?
Great, thank you. I think that the biggest challenge facing our school district is a very wide topic, school safety and climate, and it's a tough one to bring up. And when I think about answering it, it's hard. It's a very difficult, if not possible, topic to address, because I think that our schools are safe in a certain way, and I think that the challenges around this issue just keep piling up. There's gun violence, there's bullying, and there's social media, and these are all topics that are under the umbrella of school safety and climate. And they worry me for our school district, and it's a driver for me to be on the school committee, to use my experience in the classroom and as a parent to be able to help move forward, even though, I want to keep classrooms a nurturing and safe place, but we have to address these issues. And that's the biggest concern I have for the school district.
Great. Thank you.
Did she answer the question?
She totally answered the question. That was great.
Ken, you drew lots, and Adam is the person you're asking a question of.
Yes. Hello, Adam. So how might you, if you're to serve on a school committee, how might you ensure that the work that you do on the committee, you're able to ensure that every aspect of a particular issue or a question is addressed, rather than everyone just agreeing? Just ensure we get to the best solution. So how might you kind of add to that discussion about a particular topic?
Well, I think making sure you're keeping open connections to the community is very important here. As soon as a topic comes up that needs to be addressed, obviously, we're going to be doing surveys and getting data so we can make the best decision. But I think follow-up is also very important, because once a new idea is implemented, it's always a good idea to go back and make sure that it's working. And we've seen evidence of this with the school committee and other initiatives that they've done. They've done a great job of it, and I would hope to be able to add to that tradition so that we're doing right by our community, making the best choices, but also making sure that even once the job is done, we're still keeping in contact so that we can see if any needs change, if anything needs to be addressed, we can always go back and see what we need to do to help.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, you've drawn a lot. For Nicole?
I got very lucky, someone who's been on the committee previously. I was very excited when I was given this opportunity to ask this question. As someone serving on the school committee, you have seen in the social climate that we're living in how education is under siege. How do you think the school committee can best support our teachers so that we continue to keep this exceptional reputation of Long Meadow and to make sure that we're furthering it as we go forward? How do we help the teachers?
Oh, there's so many answers to that. And I think I have like a minute to answer them.
There's a lot of discussion.
I think the biggest and most important way that we can help our teachers to do the job they do is to trust our teachers to do the job that they do. All of our teachers are highly educated, highly trained, and very capable educators. And so making sure that we, as a committee, are supporting them means hearing what concerns they have, hearing what concerns families have about what's happening in our community, and making sure that we are remembering what our district goals are as a whole, that our district goals as a whole are to create an equitable and inclusive space and environment for all of our Long Meadow Public Schools attendees. And that includes our teachers and our educators. How are we making sure that everyone has access and feels represented is really important.
Thank you.
She knocked it out of the park.
I want to go with Mikayla, asking Ken a question.
All right. As I said, school safety and climate is a huge issue facing our schools. What would you do if you were on the school committee to make improvements?
Absolutely. And I agree. It's an ongoing concern for a lot of parents, certainly myself, having three kids in the school. I think, aside from, when I first recognized the work that the school is doing in terms of safety, it's very clear that the idea of see something, see something, it's implemented in the schools. If a child or student sees something that's concerning to them, they're able to reach out for help. If a teacher sees something, they're able to reach out for help. I like to see an increase in focus on ensuring that everyone has the skills necessary to recognize signs of distress, that kids know who the helpers are and where they can go for that help. I think that we need to keep that at the top of mind, the emotional, social-emotional, mental health well-being of all of our students, and equipping our educators with the skills needed to support them.
And you have some time to discuss, about four minutes or so? If there's anything that you want to explore further, you may. And then we'll finish with our closing statements.
I'm good.
All right.
Okay. That was quick.
Then we'll go to the closing statements, and we'll start in order from Nicole.
Oh, sorry. I forgot we were doing that. Okay. So recently, somebody asked me what was sort of the number-one reason why we moved into town, and I had to kind of distill down, which is not my strong suit. And so I went with the sense of community. I loved, my husband and I are both educators. We value education immensely. And I loved knowing that when I was moving here, we were moving into a community of people that also valued education immensely. And so I knew coming in that this was, this whole raising children was going to feel more like a collaborative effort, and it really, really has. And school committee work is also a lot like that. It is intense. It is multifaceted. It involves a lot of different players, and it's really important to rely on the expertise and the knowledge that everyone has. And I've just been so incredibly lucky to work with some of the And I've just been so incredibly lucky to work with some of the most dedicated, energized, energetic, and crazy smart people over the last few years. I'm really grateful to have been able to work alongside them and really proud of what we've accomplished over the last three years, when it has been some of the most difficult years that we have faced in several generations. And so, having worked alongside those people has really helped me to acquire some meaningful expertise and knowledge and experience of my own. I've learned a lot about how the system of education works in the town of Long Meadow, from state and local funding to class curriculum to building initiatives to contract negotiations. And it would be my distinct pleasure to continue serving this town that has served my family so well over the last 10-plus years, so that I can use what I have learned to help continue along and sustain the learning of our children's future.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say, Long Meadow is very lucky to have qualified candidates who are willing to volunteer their time and efforts and expertise to support our students in our schools. You know, I'm running because I really am concerned about, you know, where, you know, where the social climate is, where the emotional being of our students are right now. I started off with an opening statement with some statistics, but I think I have some more stats right now. So, the 2022 Long Meadow High School School Climate Survey, it reported a 47, 40% of our high school students reported experiencing anxiety, 30% experiencing depression, 23% suffering from some type of eating disorder, 17% had engaged in self-harm, and 13% had suicidal thoughts. This is our schools right now. This is not a national service. This is our high school, and that's really concerning to me as a parent. I'm sure it's concerning to all parents. And that's why I was compelled to really do what I can right now and leverage whatever skills I have, you know, with my professional skills, with my experience as a parent, as a single parent, as a parent of color, just trying to ensure that my kids are going into a world well-prepared, safe, and educated. And I would hope to serve on a school committee to use those skills to further that for the entire district. I humbly ask for your vote on Tuesday, June 13th. I really believe that a good committee functions well when there's a diversity of experience, a diversity of professional skills, and a diversity of thought to ensure that we come to the best solution to some of these difficult and complicated and nuanced problems. Thank you.
I am here before Long Meadow as a write-in candidate. One of the reasons I am here is to give Long Meadow a choice. We do have exceptional candidates running, but it's always good to have a different exchange of ideas, to embrace that diversity that we're talking about, to, you know, find those people in the community who have educational experience and can bring that diversity of other professional experience to the table as well. We want to, we want to do right by Long Meadow. I came here three years ago, helped the community through COVID, and I'm not done yet. I want to keep helping, want to keep volunteering and seeing what I can do to help. I think the school committee would be an exceptional place to do so. You know, these are, these are trying times that we live in, and there's a lot of fear out there, and I want to make sure that we have representatives on the committee who, you know, acknowledge that fact, but are making sure that we're employing best practices and that we're doing everything we can to see this community through those trying times. I humbly seek your vote on June 13th. I hope some of the information that's been exchanged here can help you make a decision, and if not, I know, you know, all of us as candidates are available to answer more questions so that we can continue to serve this community. Thank you. And thank the LCTV again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm so thankful for this opportunity to have my very first forum and to be here at LCTV tonight and share my ideas. I would be so honored to be on the school committee and to be able to use the experience that I have as a Massachusetts teacher, and also, now I am teaching in Long Meadow at St. Mary's. And so, it's not just like my children going into the school district, but it's my students, too. And I just have a wealth of experience in being on school teams and committees, and I think my takeaway from that is you get so much out of the collaboration and innovation that happens when you have caring people, experienced educators, and experts that come forward and serve the community, especially in times like this. I think you really need level-headed people who will make data-driven decisions that will keep the schools excellent and make progress in the areas that we're working towards, like equity and inclusion. So, I also ask for your vote on June 13th, next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the candidates. Thank you to LCTV, and thank you for watching. I want to remind you all that you have a choice to make on June 13th. Please go and vote, and if you can't make it on June 13th, head over to Town Hall to get an absentee ballot by noon on June 12th, and I'll see you at the polls. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.